The November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the City Council of the City of Springfield is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Hold on. Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgencie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman De Senzo.
Present.
Alderman McBeniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present. Mr. Mayor.
Make a motion to allow Alderwoman Purchase to participate via remote.
So moved.
Second.
Good move in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
The first item on the zoning agenda is docket number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero zero five-one for the property located at thirty-seven Fairview Lane. Petitioner is Thomas and Lorraine Cullen. Present zoning classification is R1, single-family residence district section one-five-five point zero-one-six. Requested zoning relief, a variance of section nine docs of appendix A of the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to allow the covered dock and boat lift for boat access and its current location of approximately fifty-four feet from shoreline at normal full pool elevation instead of the maximum thirty-five feet allowed. Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Limited to one dock structure up to fifty-four feet in length. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move that we accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation.
Docket.
The move in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval. In second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderwoman Purchase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the zoning passes ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-five-two for the property located at nine-twenty-eight South Second Street. Petitioner is Springfield Rentals LLC. Present zoning classification is R5B, general residence and office district section one-five-five point zero-two-one. Requested zoning relief, a variance of section one-five-five point zero-five-six, minimum required lot area per dwelling unit to allow five dwelling units on a lot containing six thousand three hundred twenty square feet instead of the twelve thousand five hundred square feet required. One-five-five-point-four-eighty-G, H, and I, landscape screening and lighting regulations as follows. To vary the requirements of G and H landscaping provisions regarding installation of any additional landscaping as the building is already a multifamily residence, and I, to vary the elimination of the application of the provisions related to any transitional buffer yard on the north, south, and east property lines from ten feet to zero feet. One-five-five-point-one-one-four-A and B, regulations of the location of off-street parking facilities to allow three additional parking spaces on the adjacent parking lot to the north, and to allow residents to park in the existing front paved driveway parking space and to exit onto Second Street. One-five-five-point-zero-six-two-C-one, permitted obstructions in a front yard to allow a parking space on a driveway in a front yard and not leading to a garage or parking space beyond a front yard. One-five-five-point-one-one-one, access to off-street parking facilities to allow the continued use of the parking spaces located in the driveway spot to access Second Street by backing into the right-of-way instead of in a forward manner. Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation for approval.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval. In second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the zoning passes ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-five-three for the property located at seventeen forty Wabash Avenue. Petitioner is Wo and Go Coffee LLC. Present zoning classification is B1 Highway Business Service District section one-five-five-point-zero-three-three. Requested zoning relief, a variance of section one-five-five-point-three-two-one-B, non-illuminated signs, and one-five-five-point-three-two-two-B illuminated signs to allow one hundred and eighty-seven-point-two-zero square feet of wall signage instead of the thirty-six square feet required. And section one-five-five-point-three-twenty-E, permitted accessory on-premises signs to allow the ground sign proposed in the site package where the sign is not elevated ten feet above grade and not setback ten feet of a street right-of-way per code to allow a setback of two feet from the property line to allow the replacement of the existing ground sign. Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval as submitted. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the zoning and planning commission recommendation.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning recommendation for approval. Second, any discussion? All in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderwoman Purchase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the zoning request passes ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-five-four for the property located at twenty-nine thirty-five Clear Lake Avenue. Petitioner is Wo and Go Coffee LLC. Present zoning classification is B1 Highway Business Service District section one-five-five-point-zero-three-three. Requested zoning relief, a variance of sections one-five-five-point-three-two-one-B, non-illuminated signs, and one-five-five-point-three-two-two-B illuminated signs to allow one hundred and twenty-two-point-one-four square feet of the wall signage instead of the thirty-six feet allowed. And one-five-five-point-three-two-two-C illuminated signs to allow illuminated signage on a lot closer than one hundred feet from a residential zoning lot. Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval as submitted. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept recommendations from the planning and zoning commissions.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval. In second, any discussion? All in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderwoman Purchase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the zoning request passes ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-five-five for the property located at eleven-twelve East Oak Street. Petitioner is FFLL Properties LLC. Present zoning classification is R2, single-family and duplex residence district section one-five-five-point-zero-one-seven. Requested zoning relief, a variance of section one-five-five-point-one-five-seven, discontinuance of use for remodel of the single-family residence along the east property line which has been vacant for more than six months, allowing for the continued use of two single-family dwellings on one lot of record. Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation.
Docket.
Been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval. In second, any discussion? All in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderwoman Purchase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the zoning request passes ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-five-six for the property located at twenty-nine twenty-nine Cronin Drive. Petitioner is Margin Properties of MMS, Inc. Present zoning classification is R2, single-family and duplex residence district section one-five-five-point-zero-one-seven. Requested zoning relief, a variance of section one-five-five-point-zero-six-one, basic yard requirements to allow for parcel two, a rear yard setback west property line of zero feet instead of the twenty feet required, and for parcel one to allow a front yard setback south property line of nineteen-point-four-nine feet instead of the twenty-five feet required, and a rear yard setback north property line of ten-point-zero-three feet instead of the twenty feet required. Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion we accept the planning and zoning recommendation.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation. In second, any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, real quick. I think that, and I would recommend to zoning, if they could look at this, this is a corner lot, and what we're seeing, if you're doing duplexes on corner lots, that the, what is it, the front yard, it messes with our zoning, and so they have to come through the whole zoning process for this. I don't know if this could be a simple case of signing off on it or not, but we're seeing more and more, and I know I've got one other one coming. I just, any time you get these corner lots, you know, and they put duplexes on, one duplex isn't gonna have the correct yard or whatever. So, am I saying that right, Matt?
Yeah.
And so I just, I would recommend that we might wanna carve something out in our zoning so that we don't have to go through the great, you know, the big, the big.
Rigorous process.
Yeah. So, that's all I'd like to point out.
Well, Matt, our corporation council wanted to comment on that, but we will take a look at that or have looked at it and see how we can make the process easier, more efficient.
We'll certainly have some discussions on that.
Very good.
Yeah, we'll have some discussions on that.
Thanks, Matt.
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
In relation to this discussion, are the adjoining properties, single-family homes in this case?
Yes.
No, they're also condos and duplexes.
Yeah, they're duplexes, but they're.
That could be an issue, but in this case, it's not. So, we wanna have an opportunity for the adjoining neighbors always to weigh in on zoning, but I agree, in this case, it doesn't seem necessary. But if they were single-family homes, it might be a case.
And I think most of these are duplexes is where the problem arises. It's not single-family homes.
That's true.
What I'm saying is, if the adjoining property next door were single-family, a single-family home might not want a duplex next door is what I'm trying to say.
Any other discussion? Thank you very much. Next item on the, we have to vote on that. So, those approving, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderwoman Purchase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the zoning request passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-five-seven for the property located at thirty-fifty-one Hollis Drive. Petitioner is Sickage LLP. Present zoning classification is R5B, general residence and office districts one-five-five-point-zero-two-one. Requested zoning relief, a variance of sections one-five-five-point-three-one-one, non-illuminated nameplates and identification signs, one-five-five-point-three-fourteen illuminated signs, and one-five-five-point-three-fifteen residential and office sign district sign conformances to allow installation of additional illuminated signs, signage of approximately thirty-two square feet in size on the front of the building as shown on exhibit C. Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion we accept the planning and zoning recommendation.
Second.
The move in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval. In second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderwoman Purchase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the last item, oh, that passes ten voting yes, none voting no. Last item on the agenda is docket number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-five-eight for the property located at thirty-four fifty-one Lumber Lane. Petitioner is EMS Midwest LLC. Present zoning classification of I-1 Light Industrial District section one-five-five-point-zero-four-zero. Requested zoning relief, a conditional permitted use pursuant to section one-five-five-point-zero-four-zero-C-twelve, conditional permitted use in the I-1 Light Industrial District, adult-use cannabis craft growers, and section one-five-five-point-two-one-one-point-nine, adult-use cannabis craft growers, and section one-five-five-point-zero-four-zero-C-fourteen, conditional permitted use in the I-1 Light Industrial District, adult-use transporting organizations or processing organization, and section one-five-five-point-two-one-one-point-one-zero, adult-use cannabis transporting organization or processing organization, and section one-five-five-point-four-nine-two, conditional permitted use. Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval of a conditional permitted use for a craft grower with the following conditions. Number one, the craft grower is limited to fourteen thousand square feet of enclosed, secure cannabis cultivation area in accord with state law. And number two, zero square feet is open to the public as described in exhibit C to the petition. Recommend approval of a conditional permitted use for a transporter. Recommend denial of a conditional permitted use for a processor. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the planning and zoning recommendations.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff recommendation. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderwoman Purchase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the ordinance passes seven voting yes, or I'm sorry, eight voting yes, two voting no. That concludes the zoning portion of our meeting.
This time, the chair recognizes Treasurer Buscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of October had a beginning balance of fifty-five million four hundred ninety thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars. We took in total receipts of fifteen million six hundred thousand two hundred dollars. We had total disbursements in the month of October of ten million one hundred eighty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of sixty million nine hundred six thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars. Of that corporate fund ending balance, it had an ARPA fund balance, Mayor, of twenty-four million five hundred seven thousand two hundred sixteen dollars. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
We'll move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the November first, two thousand and twenty-two regular city council meeting and approve the minutes.
We'll move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this city council.
We'll move, Mayor.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this city council meeting.
We'll move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Discussion. Alderwoman De Senzo?
Yes, I would like to withdraw two thousand and twenty-two four eighty-six.
Second.
Motion to withdraw two thousand and twenty-two dash four eighty-six. I don't think we need a motion on that, do we, Councilor?
Uh, motions been made, so you can go ahead and by voice vote.
Okay. All in favor, or any discussion on that?
I would just like to say that I'm withdrawing this after several concerns from the neighbors that live nearby. It was brought up by someone who lived close by, but the neighbors on Fourth Street and Cedar want to keep the stop sign in place, so we're keeping the stop sign.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Present on four seventy-six, four seventy-seven.
Noted.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the pre-council reading of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage with the exception of two thousand and twenty-two dash four eighty-six.
We'll move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderwoman Purchase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the consent agenda passes ten voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number two thousand and twenty-two dash two fifty-six, two thousand and twenty-two dash three eighty-four, two thousand and twenty-two dash four sixty-three remain tabled during committee. During motion, are any of those?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw two thousand and twenty-two two fifty-six.
Second.
Been moved in second to withdraw two thousand and twenty-two dash two fifty-six. And what's that pertaining to?
That's the War Memorial. I can't get people to agree, so we're just gonna do it again.
Do I need to read that into the?
Just a simple motion to withdraw.
Okay. Okay. Been moved in second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-two dash four fifty-five, ordinance authorizing execution of annexation agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois, and Fred Wallace LLC for the property located at Hill Street. Chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the city council to hold a public hearing regarding this annexation.
We'll move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The public hearing is now open. Does anybody wish to address the city council regarding the annexation agreement?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved in second to adjourn the annexation public hearing. And second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain and place the motion to place agenda number two thousand and twenty-two dash four five-five on final passage.
We'll move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderwoman Purchase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the ordinance passes ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-two dash four fifty-six, an ordinance annexing certain real property located at Hill Street. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand and twenty-two dash four fifty-six on final passage.
We'll move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye, or vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderwoman Purchase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-two dash four fifty-seven, an ordinance authorizing execution of annexation agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois, and Cochran Development LLC for property located at six eighty-one Bradfordton Road. Chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular city council meeting to hold a special public hearing regarding this annexation agreement.
We'll move, Mayor.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Does anybody wish to address the city council regarding this annexation agreement?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved in second to adjourn the public hearing. And second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular city council meeting regarding this.
We'll move.
Motion. Been moved in second? We already did.
Yeah.
That's good. Thanks for keeping an eye on me. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand and twenty-two dash four fifty-seven on final passage.
We'll move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderwoman Purchase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the motion carries, ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-two dash four fifty-eight, ordinance annexing certain real property located at six eighty-one Bradfordton Road. The chair will place, entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand and twenty-two dash four fifty-eight on final passage.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderwoman Purchase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the annexation request passes ten voting yes, none voting no. The chair will entertain a motion to spend with rules in place on first reading several items because of the closure last Friday due to Veterans Day. The first one is agenda number two thousand and twenty-two dash four ninety-seven, ordinance authorizing the purchase of five Ford F-150 pickup trucks from Morrow Brothers Ford, Inc., off of the state contract number twenty-one four sixteen CMS dash BOSS four dash B dash twenty-nine four seventy-nine, in an amount not to exceed two hundred and two thousand six hundred and five dollars for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to put all of these on omnibus. I think there's ten of these that are coming in.
Second.
Been moved in second to put all the items on an anonymous vote. And second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item was two thousand and twenty-two dash four ninety-eight, an ordinance authorizing a one-year extension of an agreement with HSHS Medical Group to administer drug and alcohol testing for potential new hires and for current employees in compliance with the federal regulations, and authorizing additional spending authority of one hundred thousand dollars for a total amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from January first, two thousand and twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three for the Office of Human Services. Next item is two thousand and twenty-two dash four ninety-nine, ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Acre Company LLC for financial assistance for the property located at five twenty-six East Adam Street, and for Old State Capitol Plaza utilizing central area tax increment finance funds through the Office of Planning and Economic Development for an amount not to exceed five hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Next item is two thousand and twenty-two dash five hundred, ordinance authorizing relocation expenses for the acquisition of property occupying parcel SR zero zero three-three, fourteen zero four East North Grand Avenue, in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars relating to usable segment six A of the Springfield Rail Improvements Project for the Office of Public Works. Agenda item two thousand and twenty-two dash five zero one, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses for the acquisition of property occupying parcel SR zero zero three-four, thirteen forty East North Grand Avenue, in the amount of fifty-two thousand four hundred dollars relating to usable segment six A of the Springfield Rail Improvements Project for the Office of Public Works. Item two thousand and twenty-two dash five zero two, ordinance authorizing relocation expenses for the acquisition of property occupying parcel SR zero zero three-six, thirteen thirty-six East North Grand Avenue, in the amount of twenty-two thousand three hundred dollars relating to usable segment six A of the Springfield Rail Improvements Project for the Office of Public Works. Item two thousand and twenty-two dash five zero three, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses for the acquisition of property occupying parcel SR zero zero four-two at thirteen twenty-two East North Grand Avenue, in the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars relating to usable segment six A of the Springfield Rail Improvements Project for the Office of Public Works. Item two thousand and twenty-two dash five zero four, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses for the acquisition of property occupying parcels SR zero zero two-eight at sixteen thirty-three East North Grand Avenue, in the amount of forty-five thousand five hundred dollars relating to usable segment six A of the Springfield Rail Improvements Project for the Office of Public Works. Agenda item two thousand and twenty-two dash five zero five, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses for the acquisition of property occupying parcel SR zero zero three-zero at thirteen twenty-one North Fifteenth Street, in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred dollars relating to usable segment six A of the Springfield Rail Improvements Project for the Office of Public Works. Item number two thousand and twenty-two dash five zero six, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses for the acquisition of property occupying parcel SR zero zero three-two at fourteen zero eight East North Grand Avenue, in the amount of forty-seven thousand three hundred dollars relating to usable segment six A of the Springfield Rail Improvements Project for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to accept all those agenda items from two thousand and twenty-two dash four nine-seven through two thousand and twenty-two dash five zero six for first reading.
We'll move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. I see the one ordinance, two thousand and twenty-two four ninety-nine, is requesting TIF funds. Just from a quick glance at our package, it looks like the petition, the developer has a significant amount of information included with this. Could we, just before next week's meeting, have an update from, I bet, on this, the current balance of that TIF fund and any current obligations on it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, Alderwoman Conley was asking for a downtown TIF update with regards to the balance and any accrued projects from that fund for, specific to the Acre Company project submission. She wants to make sure there's enough funds in the TIF and moving forward.
Petitioners certainly put a lot of work into their requests, so. Tishers certainly put a lot of work into their requests, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business come before the city council? Alderman DeSanto.
Thank you. I have two items. The first is, we have a mobile tattoo parlor that's roaming around Springfield. Over the weekend, it was in Ward 7. It was in Ward 6 yesterday. It was in Ward 2.
It's been in Ward 10.
It's been in Ward 10. It's been on the fairgrounds. What do we need to do? This is obviously an illegal operation. But they're skirting the rules and they're moving all over town. We have got, we've got to do something about this. So what are our options to put a stop to this? They did have a brick and mortar in Ward 7, and now they don't. And they just travel around and do tattoos out of a mobile unit.
Well, I would imagine we have to, we'll have to take a look at the code and if need be. Do you know what the code currently reads?
Just very briefly, if it would be, it'd end up being a zoning issue because they cannot go and basically move around to different zoning. So we can, would that be sticks?
Yes.
Is that the sticks? Okay. And we can get information and we can get basically a cease and desist telling them, stop doing that. So we can try to get information on both the owner and then basically gather information to make sure that they're in compliance with the zoning because that would be the primary issue. You may recall that there are some circumstances where mobile activities such as food trucks are proper, but this type of activity would not be one of those.
Absolutely not. And it's not only that. A big thank you to Public Works. They're on top of it. I really appreciate their help. But they're, we're wearing them out for them to go have to sticker this individual constantly for something he's doing illegally, knowingly illegally, is a waste of city resources and time.
Can I ask, is there a health issue?
Oh, sorry. Alderman Gregory, Conley, then Rep.
I'm not done with my first one.
I just want to have a follow-up question to her, if I could.
Is there any questions on that? That's what I was referring to.
I were spirited today.
I was wondering if that's a health issue too because they have to have some kind of license through the health department, don't they?
That is correct.
All right.
So do you know, corporal council, if there's any fine that could be levied by the police department writing tickets or something? Or can we put that into code?
It would be, yes, we can look at that. It would be an ordinance violation most probably for zoning, and that does carry substantial fines. Daily fines for violations.
We'll give a report back then.
Yep.
Alderman Conley.
If I could ask, has anyone turned them into Sangamon County Department of Public Health?
I love, if you want to come up and, Daryl Harris, the Assistant Director of Public Works.
Daryl's on it.
Yes, he is.
Who's this?
Got a tracker.
Well, basically, our inspector has, like you said, stickered the particular office several times and they keep moving to location locations. And all the wards you mentioned is those wards and others as well. Basically, they're those setup-type operations where they bring their van out. We think some of the tattoo may be actually occurring within that van premise itself.
Yeah.
So yes, and we have reported to the health department of the county on occasion too as well. So each time, our inspector is quite as like today on six and Ash and the property owner actually helped us in making sure the guy was escorted off the property. And the previous time, I believe, was on Echo Arthur.
Yeah.
And the property owner, in that case, escorted the person off his property.
Yep. And in this situation, it'd be super helpful to have a city council member on the Sangamon County Board of Health. It'd be awesome.
Hey, maybe we can point you.
Don't you do it.
I mean, especially if like the council's voted on it and everything, it'd be really cool.
Maybe once you get off the council, you might be able to get on.
Do you think that's a possibility?
You never know.
Yeah. Okay.
So any other discussion on this issue? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. My second issue, and I'm a broken record on this, and you probably all know what I'm going to say. But an elderly woman was hit crossing MacArthur yesterday from Williams Boulevard into the park. I have been sitting up here for five and a half years complaining about this intersection, complaining about this lack of a pedestrian walkway, which is what it is. To the point where I put, I put money in the budget to have it fixed for this year. I've seen kids on bicycles get hit there. I've seen dogs get hit there. I've seen adults get hit there. It's a death trap, as I put in an email to several of you last night. What are we going to do? What are we going to do about this? When is this going to get fixed? Because I'm not leaving the seat until this problem is fixed.
Yeah, so we have ordered rectangular rapid flashing beacons for the interim to install. They draw a little bit more attention, a little bit more visible. So we'll put those at the existing crosswalk that's marked. However, long-term planning-wise, which we're planning on doing actually next spring, and we're planning on putting it into the budget, is actually restriping it, choking it down to the one lane and having a refuge island in the middle. And then we'll relocate those rectangular rapid flashing beacons into that location. So there's a refuge island in the middle of the road. Also, like I say, it'll be choked down to one lane, so it'll slow the speed. You only have to look at one lane in each direction whenever a pedestrian's crossing.
And Director, I thank you, and I know the plan. The frustration is, it's taken five and a half years to get here. And this person, to my knowledge, is not in good shape and may not make it. And if that's the situation, who do you think, who do you think is going to be liable for that? That's a pedestrian walkway that is never enforced. It's not ticketed. I mean, this is bad. B-A-D, bad. And I'm really tired of having to come up here on Tuesday nights. We all know the problem, and it can't be solved. So it's, it's very frustrating. And my heart is broken for this person who is in very bad shape over this. You know, Joe and I got emails about it this weekend. So did Alderman Conley. We all, you know, this is, it's enough. We've got, we have to do something.
Yeah, I'd ask Assistant Chief Stunkel to come up and shed light on the situation as far as what occurred.
I just, I want to add one other thing. You know, we're not notified when these things happen. This is in Ward 6. No one called me. No one let me know. A constituent, actually, someone who lives in Jerome called me because she stumbled upon this person and stopped and called the police and waited till the ambulance got there. And I, this is something I've also complained about. When things happen in our wards and people want answers from us and we can't provide answers because we don't even know about it until someone else calls us and tells us. That's a, that's a problem too.
First, to address the situation itself, and you talk about liability and whether that comes, you know, where that is. Just the information that we have from the police report, from the witnesses, is that the pedestrian was actually cited for not being in a crosswalk when they were crossing the street.
Where's the crosswalk? Please tell me.
They're crossing somewhere where there isn't a crosswalk.
There's no crosswalk at all.
She is, she was cited for that.
I have to stop you because I walk this all the time with my dog. And a guy yelled at me the other day because he's like, you can't cross here. I'm like, look at the sign, dummy. You can cross here. This is actually a pedestrian crosswalk. I'm supposed to be able to cross here. So I'm getting into a verbal altercation with someone who's telling me that I'm not supposed to be crossing where it's supposed to be a pedestrian crosswalk. Do you understand the insanity of the situation?
I can understand why that would be frustrating.
We can have someone from Public Works go out there and survey it to make sure that everything's marked.
They know what's up. They know what's going on. Everyone up here knows what's going on. I've been complaining about it for five and a half years. This is not news. So go on. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No.
That's basically it.
I think I covered it.
Thank you.
Can I ask, I'm scared.
Go ahead. You should be scared. Everyone should be scared. Because I'm mad.
So if everybody's getting hit there, maybe it shouldn't be a crosswalk.
Are you kidding me? It's the way to get in the park.
Is there a better way to get them there?
Why can't we have crosswalks all over the city?
I'm just asking, is there another way they can go? Because if they, you said a dog or a cat.
It's a, it's a main draw to get into the park. It's a main feature of living in that area.
So is there a smarter way to get them there, is all I'm asking? To where maybe after all these hits, it's time to look at another corner? I mean, I don't know. I don't live over there, but I'm just saying, you're saying you've been going through this for five years and all these incidents keep happening. Maybe it's a bad place to be trying to have them cross. I don't know.
You know.
It could be. They're getting hit.
Just to let you know, that is the, to my knowledge, the only, from our records, pedestrian incident at that crosswalk this year. We didn't go back.
Just this year.
Any further, but this year that is, you know, it is November. The only pedestrian incident in that crosswalk.
That was at a different crosswalk.
We do have several vehicle accidents, mostly rear-end accidents from people waiting to turn. People get hit. We have a deer that got struck there, but first time that a pedestrian this year.
That's not the first, that's the first time this year. That's not the first time ever.
That's what I said this year, you know, that's as far back as we went.
Be very clear. It's not the first time ever.
Is this scheduled for a road diet? It sounds like, like similar to what Walnut has that we put in place?
Just for this portion, yes. We're planning on choking it down to slow down the speeds and providing an island of refuge, a median, in essence, that's, that'll have curb and gutter in the middle of the road to allow the pedestrians to only, in essence, have to look one way when they're crossing. Then we'll also have activated push buttons with the rectangular rapid flashing beacons.
So this has nothing to do with the remaining improvements on MacArthur, which we're having a public hearing on Thursday?
Totally separate issue.
That's, that's correct. That's a totally separate issue, and since I'm here, there is.
There's a reason, is, I guess there, what I'm getting at is why not run it from Walbash to that area?
It's not a state route.
The, the average daily traffic is substantially higher on the portion to the, to the south between Walbash and South Grand Avenue. So by doing a road diet, your, your level of service of your roads, there's going to be a lot of congestion and backup. However, once you get north of South Grand Avenue, it drops off some, which allows us to choke it down at that location. However, once you get to the intersections, then, then it picks up a little bit and you have, in essence, a bottleneck at the intersection. So that's why we actually have road improvements with a left turn lane, a bidirectional left turn lane, and then at the, at the intersection of, of MacArthur Boulevard and Lawrence Avenue.
So does, MacArthur's a state route, correct? Up until South Grant to Walbash, or does it go past? Is that our?
It's a state route from basically Walbash to South Grand Avenue. The other portion has been jurisdictionally transferred to the city south of there.
Because that's just a block away, isn't it? So why wouldn't we try to extend the design work all the way to that area? That's what I'm getting at.
Because we can't wait six years for it. Sorry, Mayor.
But you would have a, you know, I'm asking the professional engineer. He's the professional, and that's who we have to rely upon. And the, I understand the MacArthur Boulevard situation because this is what happens when you have a change of administrations. Things slow down. And so we started that process all over again. Alderman McMinim can tell you the frustration of that. And so we will be, you know, finally selecting a design. But why not ask them to continue the design another block? And we just pay for it, and we can do that design immediately. We don't have to buy a property or anything of that nature. But we would continue the look instead of looking and disjointing.
Yeah.
Can we check into that?
Yeah, I can check into it.
Thank you.
So Alderman Williams, to answer your question, people buy homes in that neighborhood because of its easy access to the park and because it's close to the park. I mean, I, that's why I bought over there. But there are pedestrian crosswalks throughout the city that people seem to know how to use. There's a flashing sign. There's a light you push. You cross the road. It's really not that difficult. There's one on Second Street. There's one out by the lake. They work perfectly well. Why, why this one doesn't work? I just, I can't wrap my head around it because it's, it's clearly marked that it's a pedestrian crosswalk. So I don't understand why it's so difficult. I just, it, I mean.
Alderman Conley.
I can't.
Thank you. And I, I did, I did have phone calls about this too. And, and I explained, you know, Alderman DeSanto has been, I don't think I, I didn't say it quite as clearly firmly as you did, but has been, has been on this topic for some time. And they asked if the police department could work with the park police and start enforcing, writing some tickets for people on MacArthur.
We've been asking that for years as well.
Yep. And so I just, I told them I would, I would make that request, and I know you have. It's, it's extraordinarily dangerous. The woman I talked to was, was very upset. And I think if, this is an opportunity for us to cooperate with another police department in the city. We really need to be making this an emphasis and, and make it a priority because, again, as Alderman DeSanto has said, it is a death trap. We're very fortunate that we've had as few injuries as we have in that area. And I don't think that people should be penalized for walking instead of driving to the park. I mean, that's, that's the point of wanting to have a walkable city is that you can safely get from one side of the street to the other. So it would be nice to see, you know, in conjunction with our, our, our police department, but work with the park district and make that a focus and pull people over, you know, and issue some tickets. If, I mean, again, I, people know not to speed too much in Leland Grove because they get a lot of tickets. And I know that our police department is swamped. I'm not, I'm not criticizing, but if we could partner with another police department whose job is to protect the parks, it would be nice to see some enforcement in that area.
Yeah, I know there is a partnership because we had calls to the contrary where people were getting tickets from the park police down MacArthur. And they said, do they have jurisdiction? We said, yes, there's a reciprocal agreement. So yeah, that's, I think the, the point of interest. And let's be honest, everybody around this horseshoe and beyond this, these walls are concerned about what happened. So with regards to the park police, I think that should be their highest priority. You know, it shouldn't be down on MacArthur. It should be right there at the park. As Alderman DeSanto pointed out, you know, numerous accidents happen there. So really, the best way to intercept that is with enforcement. And so, you know, the police department does check it. They do put up signage, things of that nature. But it's going to take continuous enforcement. But the park should, you know, they have to take the lead in that. And we definitely, I'll ask AC Stunkel here come up and he can explain or discuss the partnership we have with the park police.
Well, if I can say, the, the other concern that, that this, this person reached out to me with was just concern for people who actually do try to, you know, stop for that crosswalk on, on MacArthur in that area. You're just as likely to get hit in your car if you stop for a person. So, you know, just, again, I understand how full your plate is. But if we could make that an emphasis with the park department too, and.
You know, we have many partnerships with police agencies all over. The park district is one that we work with in many areas. It also has been a priority of our traffic division. I know you've seen the signs out there. You know, that's not all they do. They are out there enforcing it as well, and we will continue to improve that enforcement as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, who was there first? The, the, the street or the park?
So Williams Boulevard is actually the park, it's the park district's street. But we do a lot of maintenance over there. But MacArthur is the city's. So they're crossing over from the park district's street to the city street.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I was trying to understand it because.
They usually get hit on the city street.
Yeah, the neighborhood would know that you, don't cross there. At least where I live, people get hit right there, legal or not. We, don't fool with trying to get across there. I mean, if it's been going on five years and the cats and the dogs and everybody's getting hit, it, it's time for them to try to find out where else they can cross safely.
Reroute where they've gone.
Because they want to live. They don't want to be like the lady in the hospital.
But that's ridiculous. This is supposed to be a pedestrian crossway. That's, I mean, it's marked right there. That's what it's supposed to be.
I mean, I don't think we're taking away from being it. I would just say to be safe. I mean, you said this is an older woman, and we already know this situation is an area that these things happen. Maybe try to find another way to get to the park.
Maybe we're just adrenaline junkies and we're just, you know, living on the edge, just trying to get across the street.
Yeah, in that area anyway.
Alderman Repath?
Just want to say that although the park police do have jurisdictional authority to write tickets, remember, they only have one or two squad cars in the city, and they have over 100 parks to patrol. And obviously, if they're in the area at the time, they will take action, just like any other police agency will. But we got to remember, that's not their primary mission. So.
Right.
Thanks.
Any other discussion on this topic?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMinim.
So this is a dangerous area to cross. When Alderman Jobe was in your seat, he and I worked to put on that, to put up that flashing light and to paint the, and Chief Stokel's just left the room, but I wanted to comment on what he had to say. But to paint the, the crosswalk there, there was a lot of decision-making exactly. Williams is a parallel street there. I mean, there's, it's, it's, it's two streets, basically, and they're parallel with each other. And so there's been a lot of discussion, where do you place that crosswalk? And we're going to get this fixed now even in a better way with what we just learned from Public Works. But what Chief Stokel said tonight, we have to pay attention to what he had to say. But what Chief Stockle said tonight, we have to pay attention to what he had to say tonight. He said the pedestrian got cited for not being in a crosswalk. That's, that's very significant. In other words, she was not, what I understood Chief to say, and he's, he's got, left the room.
Back.
Okay. He was saying that she got cited for not being in the crosswalk. There's a painted crosswalk, so we can't, you know, we, we, when we're up here at the circle, we got to be really careful with what we say and be accurate. And so in this case, there was also, I agree, that the cars goes zipping through there and they should stop and let people that are on the crosswalk cross the street. But if they're not on the crosswalk, it's kind of like, I hate to say it, I feel horrible about what happened, but if she was not in the crosswalk, the painted crosswalk, then she bears some responsibility. I mean, um, and so, um, but, you know, we have to go with the facts and, uh, be careful the way we paint this, uh, situation. That's all I got to say.
Alderman Redpath?
Uh, I, I'm on a different issue.
Yep, okay. Go ahead.
Director, uh, Director, uh, Public Works, I mean.
Bob Bottom.
Nate. Nate, sorry.
Director Nate.
Bottom. Nate, uh, we got an issue out at Hazeldale and Hazelcrest. It, it's on the, at Franklin Park. Um, I called it into your team last, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, you sent out, uh, TJ to check it out. What's going on is there, the residents are parking way too close to the corner, and so the people that are trying to get out of the intersection in the subdivision can't see down the street. When we sent the traffic engineer out there to look at it, he said, "There, we don't see a problem. That's because everybody's at work." And the, the situation is happening at night. So he, he turned it over to the, uh, MPO in the area to go, go through there and issue tickets for people that are parking too close to the corner, but it's not posted. So I don't know how we can write tickets to people if they're not parking in a no parking area. The, the situation probably needs Nate is to have a no parking zone from the corner back a certain amount of feet so people can see down the street. They can't see, and somebody's going to get hurt there, and they've already had, uh, accidents there, and they all, already had close calls there. So could you please come up with a res- resolution on that? Because it's, it's the topic of the whole neighborhood, so if you, uh, would look at that again. Um, and, and I know that people ha- that live in the houses close to the corner have to have parking, but they're going to have to go park the other direction and let, so people can see out the intersection. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to give a real quick update on, um, a few projects that have been completed in Ward Two. Uh, one of them being the Ambedestra Institute on 12th and Cass. They have, um, lowered that back down on its new foundation, if you have some time. I know you can't believe, Mr. McMinim, but no, they, they did lower that down, and I, I actually got a chance to poke my head in there, and, you know, I was, I was very, very surprised in the shape on the end, uh, the condition of it on the inside, being a hundred and sixty-two or some odd year old building that's been open for some while. It's, it's still in some, some good shape. Me and the, um, some firefighters actually went in and toured as well, and, uh, I was surprised, you know, was able to stand in there and, um, it's lowered back down on the new foundation. So that is complete, and they got a few little things to, to, um, uh, do to it, but, um, Mr. Getz and them did, did a great job with that, and I, I appreciate that. Um, as well as Cap 1908 on 11th and South Grand, um, we as a council approved these projects, so I just wanted to give an update on them. It is completed, painted, um, and he's weeks away from having his staff start to open it up and be a, uh, asset to the community. Um, all of these are in the ten to twelve months. Um, there is a new fitness court over there at Cox Park, um, that was a partnership between the city of Springfield, um, and the Park District, um, that spurred on, um, H.D. Smith family to also, um, donate a million dollars to the park. So, um, they have just completed a brand-new BMX pump track that the kids have been enjoying from all over, um, the city, and it's been really, really nice. It's unique, um, it's not, nothing around, within, within many, many miles. There's been some debate on it, there's some, like, closely, but, but it's definitely unique to Springfield, and it has really been a, um, fun thing to do. My, it hurts, it, it's not as easy as it looks, but I tell you, I, I took a ride on it. Um, and finally, you know, um, I, I have reviewed our cannabis grants, and, and half of those, um, are ninety percent completed or completed. And, you know, and I say all of this to say that's, that's, you know, with the twenty-two cannabis grants and, and, and the projects that I've mentioned, that's like twenty-five different projects that, that our economic development department has kicked out and worked in the last ten to twelve months. So, you know, I know Lynn's gone, but Robbie's here, he wasn't here last week, so I want to compliment you guys on that, and, you know, me and Mr. Williams, we, we talk all the time about different programs and things that we want to put in place, and, you know, a lot of times we forget that, there's got to be some people to execute that. So, you know, Robbie's a young, young guy. Um, I, I, I admire, I admire how he gets out in our community and stuff, and I want to keep him around, and I don't want you to ever feel like, um, you know, a mistake or whatever, um, um, it's the end of the world, and, you know, we've put a lot on you, especially from this seat right here in Ward Two in the last ten to twelve months. So I compliment you guys on getting things done and, and keeping, um, keeping focused at it, and I look forward to working with you on, on the next thing, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Purchase have anything? Alderwoman Purchase? Are you wanting to speak?
Okay. A couple of announcements.